The time has come and passed for Monday, September 17th, 2018, regular Waukegan City Council meeting. Roll call please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye, are here.
Alderman Mozzio.
Here.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Nusa.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velko.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present. Leading us in invocation is Pastor Jesus, Jesus, Pastor Jesus Rivera, Rivera, from 2217 Grand Avenue, Waukegan North. Pastor please stand. And Mr. Quinn, come up to the front with me immediately after that, we'll lead us in the pledge. All stand please. Look, we thank you today for this beautiful day that you allowed us to be here. We bless the city of Waukegan, mayor, and every single alderman and city official represented here today. We come together, Father God, and we praise you for this wonderful meeting that we're about to have. We thank you for the diversity that encompasses our city, and we thank you for every language, culture, and people that live here together. We want to honor you and bless you, and we pray, we pray for our leaders, so that you may guide them, use them, so they will serve with wisdom and justice and lead our city to be a wonderful city, the city of Waukegan. We pray, Father God, that as we continue in this month and we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, that you may also bless every single person that lives in our city. We thank you, Father God, for the diversity. We thank you for your power, and we thank you for this wonderful time. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Item C, Miras Comments. Welcome everyone. Thanks everyone again for coming tonight. I want to start by wishing our Jewish community a good holiday for Yom Kippur. Recent events, thanks to all the organizers and participants at a number of our recent events this past weekend. Fiesta's Patrick's Parade and the surrounding events were great, were great, were a lot of fun and festivities. Fiesta's at the Harbor was packed, Art Walk in Blues Night was, had a great attendance, and I thought that was excellent as well. Upcoming events. Waukegan Park District is looking for, looking for the public input on newly acquired land at York House and Cashmore Road. The meeting is outside onsite tomorrow, starting at 5:30 PM. The opening, the awesome opening of the Margaret Quilt Project was this past Saturday, and the exhibit will continue to be open Fridays, open Fridays through Sundays, noon to 5:00 PM. The exhibit showcases seventeen quilts made with materials found at migrant sites along trails in the southern desert, southern desert of Arizona. The exhibit is part of the Health is Life Community Arts Project. The Waukegan Park District is holding a creating community partnership meeting at Whittia Elementary School Wednesday, the nineteenth at 5:00 PM. The organizations may bring, the organization may bring information regarding resources, events, and programs available to students and families. The Waukegan Chambers Annual Multi-Chamber Event is this Thursday at Bay Marine. Sign up on the Chambers website and enjoy an evening of live entertainment, appetizers, refreshments, networking with various chambers and their members. Join the Waukegan History Museum for a Lunch and Learn featuring Waukegan's airplane stories. Learn about the first airplane ride in Waukegan and much more this, this Friday at noon at, at the Jack Benny Center for the Arts. You probably saw Thor in our, in the lobby downstairs, and that's a reminder to participate in the Waukegan Township's Superhero 5K and One Mile Fund Run fundraiser on Saturday, September 22nd. Participants are welcome to run or walk or run the course, and there will be activities for the kids. This event is part of the Health is Life Community Art Series. This year's last Amstads cleanup with Waukegan Main Street and WH Wasenac CPA is also Saturday, September 22nd, starting at 9:00 AM. Meet at North Shore Printers at 535 South Sheridan Road. Oakwood Cemetery celebrates Tipico Illinois as part of the Illinois Bicentennial on Saturday, September 22nd. Tickets are available at most Waukegan Park District facilities or call 847-360-4740 for more information. The Genesee Theater has a wide variety of concerts and shows lined up. The Michael Jackson Experience, Modest Mouse, and Smokey Robinson. You can see the complete schedule and buy tickets at geneseetheater.com. Final performance of Love and Information at Three Brothers Theater are the last two weekends in September. Tickets are, ticket informations can be found at theater's Facebook. Check the city's website at waukeganil.gov, hashtag explore Waukegan for more events and activities. That's, those are my comments. We have motion by Alderman Mozzio II, by Alderman Villalobos to approve regular meeting minutes, meeting minutes from Tuesday, September 4th, 2014. Are there any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item three, audience time. And we are on our way.
Okay, we have three minutes. The first Keith Turner.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Mayor of North Hurford, please turn 1320 North Jackie Street. And, you know, mayor and alderman, I really want to apologize to you guys that I just found this information out earlier today, and I'm just going to say it because I'm so excited about it. As many of you know, for the last eight years now, I've had my self-funded Crime Stop program in the sixth ward, and I am just overwhelmed with delight that I'm going to be making another award to one of our residents regarding an incident that occurred on North Lewis Street back in June. He was a fellow out there shooting in the street, and this young woman, a family, a mother, obviously first got her, her children to safety, but then she was a good witness. She called the police. She stayed on the phone. She gave description, direction, and she was very instrumental in effecting that arrest. That gentleman's been prosecuted of three gun crimes, and he will be going to prison. And I'm going to break roll call normally. I will point you to the conviction, but in this instance, I am going to make the award. It's one of the Lopez families in the sixth ward, and once I finalize the process, I'll be making that award probably in the next week or so. But I just want to bring that to your attention because I am incredibly excited. This is a program that I've been doing now for, like I said, eight, eight years, and it's just an additional incentive to the residents of sixth ward to be a good witness, call the police. That's your job, which we know our officers who are fantastic and wonderful job, and follow up and fight crimes. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. Very happy to announce it. Thank you.
Thank you. Selena Gomez Balorres from the library.
Good evening. I just wanted to come and say hello once again. We're always making a commitment to come out and see our city council and see our residents that come in and see the council meetings. Just a couple of quick announcements. I wanted to put a second to the Margaret Quilt Project. If you were all able to be there, it was really very moving. I actually found a family name on that, so that was a little interesting and a little overwhelming, but it was a beautiful, beautiful evening. The other thing I want to mention very quickly is library card signup month again. So if you don't have a library card, I encourage you to go. I know that we have four of you that don't have library cards. Four of you have expired, and two of you are very active ones. So, but we won't name names this time. I'll wait till the next time I visit. But you have, through the end of the month, we would hope that you come in. We have about a third, about a third of our residents have library cards. Just so you know, I calculated on my own home, library taxes for my, the home that I'm in is probably less than $200, which means with about how much I use the library, which compared to some residents is very, very small, I'm getting about eleven to one return on my investment. So I get about $183 worth of value out of my library every month, and I'm paying less than $200 a year out of my, my rent and to the taxes here. So I wanted to mention that. And I had one more thing, and now I can't think about it. That's why I should always write things down. But if there's anything that we could answer for you, I do encourage you to visit library and everyone here also. Oh, I know what I wanted to mention. In case you didn't know, we're always trying to give one piece of information before my three minutes is up. I don't know if you know this, or if everyone here knew it, but we provide services that you don't usually think of. For example, we have people who are authorized to help with voter registration. So if you need to register to vote, which is very important at this time of year, please do come and see us. We can help you do that. And also, we provide notary services free of charge. Did anybody know that?
No.
No? See, that's a big one. So we do provide notary services. We have certified notaries on our staff, so you can get something notarized almost any day of the week. So I wanted to let you know that. So your library card is worth a lot more than checking out just a book. So please do come and visit us. Unless there's any questions, I'm all done. All right. Thank you so much.
For the aldermen, I've given you a little piece of my neighborhood. I can probably guess that every alderman will see, to some extent, some of these issues in their own. I have had many conversations with the city. I guess I'm, I'm not here to cast dispersions. I think we just need to try a little better. You know, there's always room for improvement. You know, as you can see, obviously, on the first page, I actually had a conversation with the resident who's actually feeding, I think she says she's feeding stray cats, but I couldn't get it through her that it's not only just cats that are coming, you know, we've got skunks, possums. I don't need to be chasing those. I mean, I've got a nice three iron layer, you know, but I don't need to be paying fines like that. But we have laws on the books where, where people should be parking if vehicles aren't registered. You know, I know parking lots, and that vehicles have sat for probably over a year. The tags are expired. So, you know, it's just, it's just plain, I mean, plain and simple. I just, hopefully, we can, you know, work better so that the community is the beautiful city that it is.
Thank you. Jack Dye.
Sorry about the loud little one. I apologize. Jack Dye, 235 July. I had a couple of quick things I want to talk about. The first thing was conditional use permits that the city council votes on. Too often, we look at those city, those conditional use permits as opportunities for the city to improve. Those lots need improvement. In some ways, it's very warranted. One of the examples of such is when we recently looked at a cell tower in the sixth ward over at Bowling Alley at Sunset Bowl. At Sunset, the, the, sorry guys, the Sunset Bowl. Sunset Bowl was requesting a cell tower and ultimately failed as far as motion because it was too close within 500 feet. And we had asked the city, the city had asked the business owner to redo his lot and add in green space islands and all kinds of stuff that pushed the bill for his parking lot over $100,000. Now recently, we just voted and passed and paid for it and they're done, four city lots for $535,000 resurfaced them. They don't meet our own ordinances. And I have a hard time as a resident, knowing lots of business owners, that we're asking as a city, improve your business, improve your lot. Here's our requirements. Let's force this down. Let's get this done. And the city's not following suit. They're not leading by example. Those four lots that we just also repaid, which I'm very happy they're done. They're, they look great. They're wonderful. If we're going to ask businesses to build islands and add green space and landscaping, we should be doing it ourselves. And I know budget's tight. It's extra money. It's not something that anyone's looking forward to paying, but to attract business and economic development, we really need to make an effort to set the example so these businesses don't feel like, you'll take mine, but you're not going to give it up yourself. That's item number one. Item number two is we need to do something with the Waukegan Metro Parking Lot. For the second time in five years, my car's been vandalized there. I pay 60 bucks a month. This time, it happened to be a broken door handle. Someone had a rip over my door, which is locked. Nothing's inside the car. I've had a convertible top slash and car spray painted. Unfortunately, there's a lot of activity according to the police. When I've talked with them, yeah, it's a hotspot. We know that. It's the highest monthly rate on the metro line that I've found. I don't know of any place that's even close. For non-residents in Lake Forest, I think they pay 700 bucks a year, and we pay like 720, I think it is, as residents of Waukegan. Just maybe look at those costs that we're paying, especially for the results we have. I, I'm afraid of parking my car down there because I can't afford a couple hundred bucks once in a while just to repair damage by some vagrant damaging cars looking for something inside my car. I don't know. The final thing was my wife had an issue with the subway at 11 North. She was panhandled for.
Thank you. Thank you.
Brother Blanks, speaking on the issue of labor relations, police department, I think police officers, as well as teachers, who are required to live amongst the citizens are more likely to be more respectful towards the citizens and less abusive amongst the people they have to live around every day and see every day. So I'm all for requiring of our police officers, as I have stated at the school board, teachers living within the area. It's only right. The money stays here. The money needs to stay here because our residents here need that. The city needs that. Number two, I spoke last week on the issue of the Beverlydale Mall where they had the issue of Taco Fest and you wanted them to move it down to the lake. You know, you might, some asked me, why did I speak up on that issue? And I think Martin Luther King said it best when they say injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. What I mean by that is an attack on Taco Fest today is an attack on black culture tomorrow. I have paintings. We sell black art out there in McAllister, on McAllister Avenue. So I don't want that to be next. We've had our fair share in this Lake County area of attack on black culture to the point that many, many black people at some points ate to it, was afraid to express themselves as being black. But I would say too many of my Hispanic brothers and sisters that Beverlydale Mall over there, I don't see anything wrong with them having that, they're having their Taco Fest there because you just didn't really give a legitimate and rational reason to say it should be moved down to the lake, lakefront. I wish we had a mall where we were selling our goods and services, that we could have an outdoor event to promote our products. But I say that in the best interest of culture anywhere, because that's one thing that I try to express, and I tell young people, be proud of who you are, your culture, and I say that if you have any chance to promote that culture, then that's worth fighting for. Thank you.
This is a public statement submitted to the city of Waukegan mayor, Sam Cunningham, and all city council members. Good evening, Mayor Cunningham, city council members, residents of Waukegan. My name is Maria Mendez, and I am a resident of the city of Waukegan. Many of us mothers who had our daughters participate in the city of Waukegan Fiesta Patrias, Reyna's Queen event, love the pageant system. When it's honorable and true, pageant systems are to be fair for all young ladies participating. But it seems that the city of Waukegan 2018 Fiesta Patrias was neither honorable or honest. It was rigged, and was based on who collected the most money. The residents of the city of Waukegan pray that our city will have fair pageants for next year. The rest, the city of Waukegan Fiesta Patrias event, and that the Queen will be actually be a resident of the city of Waukegan. Asociación de Eventos Latinos por Waukegan is a group of individuals who are led by a well-known fraud in our community, Margaret Carrasco.
That's public attention.
Who has accused and harmed Latinos in the city of Waukegan. Unfortunately, I think this organization, who the city of Waukegan allowed to run this pageant, consists of more individuals that are unethical and are dishonest. Unfortunately, I respectfully ask on behalf of myself and all the young ladies who participated in this event, and their mothers, that all the city council members, and especially you, Mayor Sam Cunningham, please let's make sure that the city of Waukegan in the future does not allow a group like Asociación de Eventos Latinos por Waukegan to run the city of Waukegan Fiesta Patrias pageant, and that we create a committee of community leaders and residents to host a professional and a fair pageant system for the Latinos here in Waukegan. Thank you.
This is going to be short and sweet. I just want, I just came here tonight because I wanted to speak out on Mr. Mayor Sam Cunningham, city of Waukegan. Just to let, let everybody know that I was, I'm really proud of what you have done so far in the short time that you have been a mayor. I've seen many things that I haven't seen in the past events. I don't usually hang around Waukegan that much because I feel like there's not enough things that, you know, to hang around with or to do here in Waukegan. I went to the last event that you had downtown on Genesee Street. I've been here for 51 years. That's a very long time. But I lived right off Clayton and Genesee, Clayton and Sheridan Road. So I grew up downtown Genesee Street, and, you know, I was here when Walgreens, other old stores were here. It was in the, actually, the street was, was a brick street. So I remember back in the days of Waukegan, and it was very, lot safer, a lot, you know, where you can go downtown with your kids, and, and it's more happier, more alive downtown. And I've been seeing lately that what Mr. Sam, Mayor Cunningham has been doing, is he's making it more alive. When I went to the event that you had, like, three weeks ago, I don't remember when they had that on, you had the carnival type of thing going on. It was really nice because I remember when I was six or seven years old, I lived on Sheridan and Clayton, and I used to walk to Genesee Street just to go on the slide and the Ferris wheel and everything. And when you did that, I, it just, I almost wanted to cry. It's like, wow, I feel like I'm back six, seven years old again, and it was really, really nice. And I hope that you continue to do the good job that you do, which I know that you will. But I just wanted to give you my opinion of what you have been doing so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Clyde McLamore.
My pee and stuff. I'm a good one, council members. You know, we come up here and speak, we speak these three minutes. Some of y'all I watch to see who's paying attention. Then I wonder to see if anything be done about the last council member meeting. We spoke about some things, about the labors during that, over there at Peter Baker. Haven't heard anything from him. I think each one of you council members know how to contact me. But I'm not here about that tonight. I let y'all know that I'm still waiting on the answer from that. Because when you ask for a request, you seem like you should get it answered. I'm here about this, this Crossland Hotel. And, you know, it's really bad that, you know, every time I come, and I heard the lady talk about the events, and I'm reading here that y'all getting ready to approve for another event. And this ain't only for Waukegan citizens. This is for citizens from everywhere. So they be occupying hotels and everything. They come to have fun. I know when I go places, I want to have fun. So I don't know where I'm coming to. So I see a decent room online, you know, I'mma check into. That hotel, Crossland, should be shut down. We've been knowing for years that it was a prostitution, drug, drug. You can get anything you want there. Okay? Then for us to bring foreigners from another country here, and we want to show them hospitality. I'm really, I'm inspired by this. I'm really hurt by this. I went to Jamaica constantly. I, I spoke to them, and I told them how I just can't believe that the city of Waukegan, yeah, this the city of Waukegan. I know y'all didn't bring these people here. I know y'all didn't get the jobs. I know it's great America. I understand all that. But that hotel is in this city. I appreciate Mr. Motley making them statements. That's what they call fake news. Y'all hear Trump talking about fake news? This is how fake news get out. Motley makes a statement and say, well, it was a surprise inspection. Wasn't no surprise. They knew he was coming at August 31st at 10 o'clock in the morning. I was there with my bullhorn. I knew that. Nobody tell me. Wasn't no surprise. I was there. So they knew it was coming. They had a chance. They had three days to clean up, to get some of the mold out of there. Man, mold kills people. I done construction. I went to some of the mold classes. I know the only thing to clean mold, ain't nothing to do. You got to take it out and put a whole new wall there and stuff like that. This is city of Waukegan. This is the county of Lake. Let me tell you something. Lake County is the best.
Thank you, Mr. McLamore. Thank you.
That, I am asking that the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. McLamore.
Would look into that and.
Thank you, Clyde.
That statement that was made.
Clyde.
That, you know, fake news should be out there.
Good evening. My name is Janet Nazera. I'm part of the committee of Fiesta's Patrias. I'm here tonight because, yes, Sunday, we had an event at the lake, and I was in line trying to go down to put my stand, which we had tacos. I was selling tacos down there, and there was a man that was doing an event from the beginning of the lake. He was standing there directing people to his event to park in front of his area, telling people that he had free parking, and that the person that we had representing our event, who was a singer, his name was Luis Coronel, he was telling every car that Luis Coronel was canceled. He was not going to come to our event. Who was the main star of our event, he was telling every car and telling them, we were charging parking, and that he had free parking, and directing people to park at the front by the train station, and that there were people walking, walking because they thought we were charging parking. He was telling them, we were charging parking at the lake for our event down by the civilian, the pavilion down there. So there were people walking down there. And when I, when I got to the stop, he, he didn't know who I was because I was in my truck. He is a very recognized man. I know him by his, his name. And he told me, free parking, free parking. Luis Coronel is not coming. Free parking here. Come to my event. I looked at him. I said, what are you talking about? I said, I'm going down there. And he told me, good luck. He told me like that. And as I got to my event, to set up what I had down, I right away went to Margarita Carrasso, and. Carraso and Fernando and I told him, you need to send people over there because the man that's representing that event that's by, when the first entrance by the train and his securities, they're telling people that our event is canceled and that there's free parking and that our main star was not gonna come. So at that moment, I was finishing and I remembered that I had forgot something and I don't know what happened from there, that a couple of our men, security with Fernando, had to go up there and tell, direct people that Luis Coronel was coming, was coming and that's how the people were coming. And as I came back down again, I actually picked up six people that I knew who told me Luis Coronel is not coming. And I said, why are you guys walking? They were halfway through the trail to go down to the beach and I actually had to pick up six people in my truck because I had forgot something from the store, which is a box of tortillas. And I had to come back up to Waukegan and come back down to the line and I saw six people walking and I knew them and I had to put them in my truck to give them a ride to our festival.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret Carrasco.
Good evening. First of all, I just want to give a huge thank you to, wow, so many people, hundreds of volunteers, Waukegan businesses, they're all for our parade. Another huge success because all the community came together, worked together. And the city, the mayor, all the aldermen, all city workers, the police department, it was a group effort, very positive and people loved the parade. Then we had the celebration, the Grito Celebration afterwards and it was just one huge complaint, Harbor Edge, Greater Waukegan Development. They created huge chaos backing up traffic all the way Grand up to County because they're stopping every vehicle. The Waukegan residents were lied to. They were told that, as she stated, that our entertainment, our top entertainment were not showing up, they told residents that the event was canceled, they told residents that there's no parking at the beach, so they had to pay five dollars to park in their parking lot. They illegally used the Metro train station as their private parking lot. So anyone, just as the man mentioned, who wanted to park at the train station, forget it, there was absolutely no parking whatsoever. They endangered Waukegan residents by forcing them to walk down Seahorse Drive at night with small children. They also for, they made us remove our banner for our event, we had it, we had permission to post it on the walkway. They also let security, I have pictures, I have videos. And especially at the previous event, when I was there, a lot was a figure of all. When, you know, when we arrived there, I saw all these motorcycle gangs there and I was like, wow, why would you even allow them to be at your event? When all of a sudden, a huge fight broke out, okay, in chaos, and they had only two security guards there. They could not handle it, obviously. And we understand the process and we want to abide by all the rules and regulations for safety and that was our top priority for the event and we accomplished it, we worked everyone together. But, you know, why do we have other groups that are not following the rules and are doing things illegally, jeopardizing? And you can see this picture, see, here's their hitman there that would, they turned the block, they turned their backs because I was taking the pictures. They were the ones blocking, stopping vehicles for going down Seahorse Drive to our event.
Thank you. Ralph Peterson, Jr., please.
Hello, everybody. Mayor Cunningham, word is you managed to clear $30,000 profit off your golf outing, outing where you shook down every business in town. Public record shows you're solicitous and taking in political contributions, some months in excess of $20,000, many from Peter Baker and other contractors that you give contracts to in order to get kickbacks. This does not include all of the illegal kickbacks you are getting from people you continue to give liquor and gaming slash gambling license to. You tricked the residents into borrowing $50 million, then raised their property taxes, sale taxes, et cetera, so you could pay for it. All the while, you knew you wanted this loan so it would give you the monies to offer out phony, unneeded contracts to handpicked contractors who will pay you in kickbacks. Well, the house of cards is falling down on you and the corrupt, you and the corrupt county board members and soon you all will have to answer to the residents and the law. All of you, in my opinion, are thieves. Commissioner Cunningham had the nerve to come here and present you with a $75,000 check claim and there's more where that came from. I bet there is. All that she hasn't spent on buying cigarettes and McDonald gift cards to give to the poor for to get, for their vote. You, Lawler, Burton, Commissioner Cunningham ought to be ashamed. You're not servants, you're con artists who have taken advantage of the taxpayers. Some very powerful people told me that you and Michael Bond had a private meeting in reference to, and Michael Bonds is the one who donated $30,000 to your campaign in reference to selling Fountain Square for the purpose of a casino, that's if Pritzker gets in. Well, I feel you might wanna tell Michael Bonds that build that casino in Lake Forest where he lives so we could go to his community and gamble. Even the Democratic Party has thrown you away. I see Pete Cavell and Terry Link has asked Bill Durkins to get into the race. They feel you're corrupt and not smooth. They're saying you have been a complete failure chasing and stealing in view of the public. They're saying prison is even in your future. Mayor, my personal opinion is, is they used you to the max and now have thrown you away, sir. You're the biggest, and I also feel you're the biggest mistake this city have ever made. When you sum it all up, you've done three things since being elected, parades, raised taxes, and borrowed $50 million. And I personally feel you've given black leadership a nasty name, you really have. You've done nothing. The first word that got to your head is completely turned your back on that, sir.
Thank you. Mayor, that concludes audience time.
All right. Item four, proclamation. Motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Newsome, to approve National Rail Safety Week. Are there any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed, and carry. Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Tempest, to ratify appointment of Victor Gonzalez to the Waukegan C D B G Stakeholder Participation Panel. Victor, stand up, Victor. Everybody, this is Victor, hometown guy, thank you.
Face the camera.
Are there any, are there any questions? Alderman Taylor.
Mayor, the only statement I would make on this is that in light of all the problems we had a couple of months ago, I would suggest that in the future that any openings for volunteerism be put on our website and let everybody know about those opportunities so that other people, everybody can apply. And then you go through those resumes and choose somebody and then let us have 30 days to look at that. Only, and again, this is nothing against you, I think you're a good candidate, I'm just trying to prevent problems down the road in light of things that happened before.
I'm sorry, what happened before?
Well, when we had people come back against Ms. Carrasco and we had eight months later, people coming back saying, why was she allowed in and all that kind of thing?
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, I don't think that was an issue, personally speaking, but, you know.
I just think it would be nice if the community knew that some of these opportunities were available and that it wouldn't hurt to put it on the website and let them be able to know of all the opportunities that they can volunteer for.
It's one thing we are, now that you mention it, we're still looking for more participants to be on the Stakeholder Participation Panel. I think we have two more, but I will get that out to you as soon as possible. One of the challenges we have is, is just not a lot of, there's just not a lot of individuals willing to really volunteer considering the time and effort it takes, so, but certainly we definitely can go out and do that.
Well, one of the problems I've seen with, with every mayor is that what happens is people don't always know that we have the opportunities available to volunteer and they don't necessarily have the time to do it, so what happens is the mayor ends up appointing someone and then people are upset, oh, it was a political favor. No, we just, we need to fill these spots. So I think if we put it on the website and it's fair to everybody, then everybody has the opportunity to apply.
I agree with you, but what we also wanna do is, you know, from the legislative body standpoint, as I was when I was an alderman, the mayor will let us know, and most of you do know, what's out there. And you put your antennas out there just as I do, but we put it on the website, but thank you for the suggestion.
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
So same thing, this is, and obviously, nothing against this, no pointy. But because we have so many of those things and maybe we need to put a list of the, not the commissions, I guess I would call them, not committees.
Various committees and commissions, yes.
Commissions and put a list of who the people are and how long their term is and when their term is gonna be up. And in the future, when we have someone that you're gonna put up there, put their resume online, maybe as soon as you get it, two weeks before. Again, it's about, it's about the.
Transparency.
Thank you. I'm a little marble mouth today, I don't know why, but, yeah, and, you know, just so that if there is an issue or there's a question or somebody wants to know, we can, because if it's out there, I mean, God knows we have enough of them and I can't keep them straight. I know you've got a thousand things going on every day about that, everybody does, so if we can just task somebody to take one day on the website, put that down, who the commissions are, when they meet, when the members are up, I think it would just help all of us, it would help me and I think would help other residents just to know, again, it's not a knock on anything, it's just, again, it helps with transparency, it helps knowing what's going on and maybe just a quick blurb, what does this commission do? Because I think there's somebody, they don't know what every commission does.
Right.
And I think it would just help, it'd be more informative. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you, thank you. Are there any other questions? Roll call, please.
I'm sorry.
It's still a roll call, just for transparency, please.
Do you want a roll call?
Yeah, do a roll call. Yeah, you can.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosey.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion's passed, congratulations, sir, welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard, my friend. All right. Motion, Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman May, to approve monthly treasury report. Any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed, and carry.
Item six, A, motion to adopt Resolution 2018, a resolution ratifying the collective bargaining agreement made between the Waukegan Police Benevolent Labor Committee Unit Number 42 and the city of Waukegan to be effective on May 1st, 2018 and to be terminated on April 30th, 2022, and I surrender.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Tempest, are there any questions to the motion?
No questions, Your Honor. I'd have to comment, just a couple comments, we quick.
Alderman Villalobos.
Thank you. Couple things, so I just wanna reiterate some of the comments I made during committee regarding this contract agreement. Just understanding too, for perspective purposes, the wage scales for the officers would put them pretty well, compare those to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, our patrol officers will be, as a starting entry, officer would be about the 57.5 percentile in salaries compared to national average. As you move up the ranks and up the, and crew years in Waukegan, you'll be getting closer to almost the 90th percentile, which, again, I think that puts us at a competitive place for recruitment going forward. And so, you know, I think we should be paying officers well and be competitive with our wage scales. But also I would like to start the conversation again about trying to invent, incentivizing residency again. And I don't know all that history regarding that, but in my eyes, as a young person on council, it just kinda makes sense to me to try to incentivize our officers to move back in the community because I would imagine you have less crime in those neighborhoods where the officers lived. Ideally, try to disperse the officers amongst the community and not just have them essentially locate it. Because again, people aren't gonna commit crimes in a neighborhood where there's a squad car sitting in the parking, in the driveway. Also, as our skill, as our salaries go up, this is a way to keep sustainable economics in our community. You know, as we get closer to like, you know, the last year of this contract, some of our officers will be making over $100,000 and that's quite a bit of money. I've never even come close to that type of money in my life. And to me, that's kinda like where I wanna end up at. But again, it's just a way to start this conversation going again. I don't know the history and how that ended or, and from my understanding, it was somewhat controversial, but again, don't know the history at all and I'd like to be informed at some point by any officer that actually knows that history because that'd be helpful for me to again gain better perspective on that. Because again, in my eyes, residency seems just like another way to be a win-win for the community, you know, again, stable economics for the community. We have housing stock that needs to be filled, so again, that's officers that we're paying to that are gonna pay, will pay property taxes, participate in the community, more officers. And I see officers at community events, like, not on duty, the ones that do live in Waukegan, and I'm always happy to see them there, you know? And those are people who are extra pair of eyes, like unbeknownst to the community at large, those are extra eyes there for any event or anything that's going on in the community. So again, this is just something I think would be beneficial long-term for Waukegan, again, to revisit that conversation and try to find ways to incentivize our officers moving back to Waukegan. And some of our officers are born and raised in Waukegan, you know, and they have a passion for this community and that's why they do what they do. So again, and I just think, yeah, it's gonna, this conversation started happening regarding next contract negotiation in about five years or so, sorry, 2020, 2021, 2022. So, yeah, thank you for your time, those are my comments, thank you.
Any other comments? Alderman Taylor.
My only issue with any of this is, and it's not with the contract, is that in the future, I would like our negotiators to come back with supporting documentation that shows competitive wages in similar communities, whether that be Elgin, Aurora, or something more local. I think as an alderman, I wanna be able to go to my residents and say with complete confidence that we are paying competitive wages, we're not underpaying, we're not overpaying, we're right in line. And I think that's just out of respect for the residents, that they, they deserve to know that. So I would like to see supporting documentation in the future.
Alderman Taylor, I know you, you say that, that supporting documents, part of, when we get the negotiating team, particularly the team that, the lawyer there, that's part of their obligation and responsibility. Now, we can have those, I think the last time we did that, when I was an alderman, we did that, oh goodness, right before the strike, if I'm not mistaken, too, because there was questions that we're not paying enough or, from a benefit standpoint. So we did bring that in, but that is just part of the package. What we'll do though, is just have it part of this, this overall package for there. But from a confidence standpoint, I think you should be extremely confident to know that not only you're paying for the talent that we have, but in some of these communities, we're not paying enough. And I just want us to make sure that we understand as we, myself and the legislative body, when we speak to our residents, they need to know without a doubt that their taxpayer dollars are going for the services that they're asking for. I know you ask all the time, it's gonna be coming up real soon, the fire mess contract. There's some things they're gonna be asking for, we're gonna have to make a decision, can we get? can we get them? Uh, and I hear you're very adamant about that on, in the, in the particular area where you're at. So, uh, when these contracts come in, we, we vet them the best that we can and to bring a contract that is in the best interest of the City of Waukegan first.
And I want residents to understand, one way you know if you're paying competitively is your retention. Right. And that was discussed tonight, and, and I think we're all pretty happy with that.
Yeah.
So, that, that helps, you know, not only do you have numbers on paper, but actually, is your department staying here, that says a lot.
Yeah, and I think it goes, it, it goes, it goes with the overall package that we present to them. I mean, this is a, I mean, it's no question about what we give to these, to our employees. Uh, and it is, it is a difficult decision for us. But we do it because we, we expect the best and we want the best. And one way to assure that is, uh, by some of the things we negotiate, but I, I really believe that we're moving forward, we're moving much closer to, to, I think, to Alderman Villalobos' point, kind of negotiating, uh, on an even playing field. As we all know, there's some things that we had to, we had to negotiate out. They were tough, but it was necessary, and we're here. And I, I trust that this body will make the decisions in the best interest, and I selfishly say this, not to their bargaining units, but our job is to look out for the City of Waukegan first. Their job is to look out for their membership, we understand. We meet at a happy medium, and that's what the negotiation is all about. With that being said, are there any other questions? Alderman May.
Um, so, we had extensive discussion during Labor Relations Committee that I went, I'm not going to reiterate everything that we went over, but it certainly questioned a lot of points.
Yes.
And it kind of had a scoreboard going here. So, yes, we do look out for the City of Waukegan, but I think, um, when you say there was give and take, I, I, there was a, I think, on the behalf of the city, there's a lot more give on this contract. Um, you know, this, no doubt, we have an excellent police force, and I hear it all the time. People love our police force. They're there when they're, they're responsive, they do a great job, they catch the bad guy, okay? I get it, we have a great police force. But, I mean, when you look at the, and, and I won't even compare it to the private sector because of being a police officer or a firefighter is a whole different animal, but you're, we're giving a, we're giving a contract that's two and a half percent, two and a half percent, three point two five, three point two five guaranteed raises for the next four years, plus an extra personal day, plus certain holidays are probably going to be double time, maybe time and a half. Plus, we're asking for a whole unit to get an extra hundred dollars a month in stipend. While that sounds like more than two and a half percent to me, um, so, so there was a lot of giving for, for us, not, I mean, we're not, like, we discussed in the meeting, we're never going to get residency back, we're never going to, um, get rid of the twelve-hour shifts, but our, um, great brass has figured out how to schedule around twelve-hour shifts, so I guess that's no longer an issue, and we struck that language. And then we, we were, our big win, I guess, was the insurance and getting rid of the Me Too clause, but they've also are going to pay half of their portion of insurance now that they used to pay. So, you know, ten, they're paying ten percent now instead of twenty percent. So, there was a lot of gives, and I, I just question, you know, we, we didn't talk a lot about this throughout negotiations, um, sometimes we do discuss at certain benchmarks through negotiations, I don't feel like that happened with this contract.
I disagree, Alderman.
Okay.
I do, I mean, you, we were in the back, uh, when we talked about another contract, it was presented, so, uh, and I don't mean to cut you off, huh? Where's he at? I don't want you to say I cut off Alderman May. I don't mean to cut you off, but I, I, what I disagree is that I tried to be, because I was in your seat, I tried to give you as, as much information as humanly possible, so you can go over, look at, as you just did there, uh, it would, certainly would have been much better to have known some of these questions prior to, but let's just get to the heart of this. We were in a very difficult situation from the very beginning, we all agree, correct? Alderman May.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of our own making.
We...
I look up here.
But, hold on a second. Fact is, we were in a tough position from a negotiation standpoint. That's, it is what it is. I wish it my own making, your own making, it is. So, now, our job and our goal, I, we have specific goals, to align our entire city on this health insurance. That was our goal, to align. The other goal was to get out of the Me Too. Those are the two goals.
Okay.
Those goals were met. And did we have to give up a little bit more to meet those goals? That was what it is, and I...
Right.
I, I, and what I say to you, if this is not what we want, we have an opportunity today to go back to the team and tell them, this is not what we want. What I believe, going forward, this puts us on an even playing field so we can negotiate, uh, on a head-to-head negotiate, that's my personal belief. Uh, I agree with some of the things you're saying, I really do. The unfortunate part is, that's not the reality that we live in, when it comes to this specific contract, and it's going to be a little bit different on the next one. But your input is beyond important, and I value that. That's why I'm here, but thank you again, ma'am, I really do. Ald, I'm sorry, Alderman May, were you, were you finished?
Yeah, I'm finished.
Thank you, ma'am. Alderman, welcome.
Thank you, sir. No questions, just a couple of comments, because the citizens were not here for the committee meeting and some of the aldermen were not here. Uh, there was some question about, uh, why are we down to so short, five, six years as a top-out salary? I can tell you, years and years ago, when I was doing contracts, we were up to nineteen years as a top-out. We were, at that time, we were losing people to Gurnee, to Lake Villa.
Yes.
To, uh, Lake Bluff.
Yes.
To Zion, because they were down, at that time, to nine or ten years to top out for the salary. So, we started at that time slowly coming down to the present form where it is now. I've heard during committee and tonight, Waukegan police officers are extremely well-paid, and they are well-paid. They're not at the top, I keep hearing ninety percent, uh, percentile, and I've got to tell you, most of you guys sitting out there know this, but a lot of you do not know this. During my first eight or nine years on the department, eight guys that I worked with were shot. Two of them were my partners. Two officers were stabbed so bad that they had to leave the department. One of them was my partners. And before you say you don't want to be a partner of Bill Valco, I was on my day off, those, because we didn't have permanent days off together. But the thing I'm trying to elaborate on is this is a very, very dangerous job. I can't tell you how many times, and I'm being very frank here, being very frank here, that at two or three o'clock in the morning when you're chasing somebody and you've lost your partner, and you've come up to two or three guys and we're all holding guns on each other, and a couple of times that I tinkle in my pants.
No.
You better believe it, okay? So, these officers out here are very well-paid, but they are not at the top of the pay structure. If you want to retain people, you want good quality people, you want, uh, individuals that from other departments come here and train with these guys, our gang and our narcotics unit, and our major crime scene, uh, E.T.s to come and train, because they're the best of the best in Lake County. So, hopefully you'll take that into consideration while placing your vote tonight. I'm abstaining for obvious reasons, but I hope your vote is in the affirmative for this contract, Mayor, that's all I have to say, sir.
Are there any other questions? Roll call, Alderman.
I'll do it all this time, I'll be there.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Nope.
Alderman Valco.
Abstained.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Uh, item seven, old business, motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman May, uh, to approve outdoor special event festival, uh, de mo, de mo, de mole for pozole.
What's that name?
Pozole. Have some food. Velvet Mall from ten a.m. to eight p.m. on September thirtieth. The sponsors applied under the directive for non-city government use, city-owned buildings and venues. Um, this is a motion of, and, and I want to make, hold on a second, we talk to corporate. Yeah. Just real quick, we, we had a conversation with, uh, the mall ownership and, and the sponsors. Um, and we really talked about some, some things that the alderman of the ward was concerned about, the chief of police was concerned about, the chief of fire department's concerned about, and, and some things I, I, I personally was concerned about, and one of them was, you know, it, I don't think it, it really was having a problem with the event itself, it was the size of the event and the limitations of how much of the parking lot that they really wanted to use. And I'll give you an example. Uh, the stage was at the far west entrance of Velvet Mall parking lot, and the, I guess, vendors went all the way to, uh, if those can remember, there's a light right there, you can turn into Velvet, all of that was part of the vendors and stage. And then, they then had parking south of, south of, and I don't have a diagram, I'm hoping everybody go on memory, south of where the vent, one of the things we talked about is that you do not have enough room for all of the things you want to put there. And, uh, to their point, they were saying, well, the goal is to have people come into their activities at the parking lot and to, uh, come into the mall. I get that, but it causes congestion, it causes confusion, and it causes a safety hazard for our police and fire in the event there's an emergency. There was just no willingness from their end to kind of change that. So, we had to ask ourselves, okay, if you don't want to change it, then we have to make some change within ourselves. Uh, per them, they were looking at, uh, opening up some other, uh, parking options, um, and then parking on some of their land, I think, to the, to the west of there. So, I mean, uh, the, the times, there, certainly the times over there was, uh, at eight p.m., it was kind of challenging for us, you know, having eight p.m. on, what is that, I don't know which day, but I think it was a, was that a Sunday?
No.
Sunday? I think we suggested, I want to make sure, six, six p.m., right, Chief? Six p.m., uh, from, uh, at ten a.m. to six p.m. And, um, so that was something that, that we kind of talked, we're not kind of, we talked about with them. Per them, they weren't aware that there was any complaints that was going on. Alderman, Alderman Seager was there and explained to him that you need to go talk to Walgreens, go talk to Home Depot, because those individuals were calling the city.
Right.
Wondering why we had approved this. So, we suggested to them to go ahead and, 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 uh, and do that. Um, we cut, we left it right, right then and there, I guess we were here to, today, do we, the question would be, Alderman Seager, do you want to give them a, 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 another bite at the apple? That's, I think, the question right, right here. Uh, I, I know that six o'clock time needs to be changed, so we certainly got to change that to ten a.m. to six p.m., that has to be changed, but, you know, considering the owner of the Velvet Mall, along with the, the event promoter, was with police, fire, myself, the alderman, uh, I do, I don't see any, any major problem in giving them a, a, another shot on, giving them another opportunity. In the meantime, uh, I will personally get in contact with the manager at Walgreens and the manager at Home Depot, uh, to let them know the hours, the time we've agreed to and things like that, and, uh...
Your Honor, I thought they agreed to, to our hours that we presented to...
Wait, I know, but it was just on here, I just want to make, be clear, it's, it was wrong, we need to go to ten to six p.m., so we're, we're fine.
Six p.m., is that at eight?
No, it's not eight o'clock here, uh, Alderman, it's ten to six.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. So, with that being said, the...
I just want to make sure I'm, I'm clear, they were amenable to all of our suggestions.
Yes, they were. I will, let's step back, they, per them, they said they really wasn't aware of any problems that was going on.
Has, have, have these guys been here before? Have this been us?
Yeah, they have. But we, I think that the difference is, we've had the owners of the property, and that's been one of our goals and objectives, to bring these owners of all of these properties uh, and to, to speak with us. So, that was much more helpful than anything else, talking directly to those who owned the property, Alderman Mosio.
Because one of the key things in here, and six, six p.m. is fine with me, because is it going to be, are they going to have music, and is it going to be amplified?
Well...
And obviously, if you're going to go at eight o'clock on a Sunday, that's going to get some residents a bit upset.
No, we're going to six, we're going to six.
Six o'clock is probably much better, but if you go past that, there's, there's, there're going to be a lot of residents that get upset.
Yeah, six, six p.m.
Six o'clock is fine, that would be fine.
Yes, six, six p.m. And as far as the noise is concerned, uh, we did, did inform them of our, uh, you know, of our, our noise avoidance, so, uh...
But again, again, the residents that I talked to, if they know that the music, they don't mind the music, but they know it's going to stop at a reasonable hour, six p.m., most of them are fine. But when it starts going past that and they have to get up and go to work in the morning, that's when they get a little bit of, it doesn't matter if it's a house party or if it's a, any, anything.
I agree.
And, and, and that just drives people out of their mind. I mean, I know, you know, me, one of my number one, I get, my two number one calls are people that can't drive and, and, and loud we, those have been my two number one calls since I put it on.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So, I'm, I'm glad they were amenable to the six p.m., I'm happy with that.
Well, and that's going to be a standard, not just for, that's going to be a standard on our end. So, we, we did inform them of that. All right, so, right now, we have a motion on the floor, but we need to, we need to amend that motion, because as it states on the agenda, it has eight p.m., it's actually six p.m. Yeah.
So, move.
All right. It's moved by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Mosio, Alderman Seager.
I, if he wants a second, it doesn't matter, if the alderman of the ward wants a second, that's fine.
All right.
We're remitting it to six o'clock, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ten a.m. to six p.m. So, the new motion on the floor is to approve outdoor special events festival, uh, at Velvet Mall from ten a.m. to six p.m. on September thirtieth. Sponsor is applied under the directive of non-city government use, non-owned buildings and venues. Any, any other questions to the motion? Do a roll call, roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. New business. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Taylor, to approve regular payroll date of September fourteenth, twenty eighteen, a total amount of one million, five hundred fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred seventeen dollars and sixty-one cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.[1741.53]
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion by Alderman Taylor.
Excuse me, Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Don't worry, sir.
When you voted on the motion for the, or the amendment to the motion, don't we then have to go back and vote on the actual motion?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, we missed it.
Yeah.
What?
Yeah, we have, yeah, we voted on the amendment.
The time change.
Okay. We voted on the six o'clock, but then we never actually voted on the actual approval.
All right, and I agree. Good catch, old man, thank you, ma'am, thank you for that correction, catching up.
I saw.
That was the only motion that was on the floor, and it was as amended.
Oh, is that as amended, okay.
As amended, okay.
As amended?
Right.
It's funny.
Right.
All right, good enough.
Yeah, no, that, that makes sense.
All right. All right, then, thank you, Corporation Council. But good eye, Alderman Taylor.
Thank you.
All right. Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Bolton, to approve elected official's monthly expense account payroll date to September fourteenth, twenty eighteen, total amount of six thousand, three hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-six cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Bolton, to approve vendor payments dated September seventeenth, twenty eighteen, total amount of two million, four hundred four, four hundred eighty-five thousand, forty-seven dollars and sixteen cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item D, motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Seager, to approve final cash out, name listed on the agenda, payroll dated September fourteenth, twenty eighteen, total amount of twenty-one thousand, sixty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Mozio, uh, to approve extending, extending the existing contract with Delta Institute for the facilitate, uh, for, for the station of Waukegan Waterfront Working Group to terminate. Uh, when the grant for the work expires January eighth, twenty nineteen, and authorize the mayor to execute said contract extension. Any questions to the motion?
I have a question, Mayor. Is this, um, extension going to be covered by the grant?
It will.
It will? Okay.
It just bad, matches up the termination of the grant with the, uh, with when the funding actually will end.
Great, wonderful, thank you.
Roll call, any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Mozio, second by Alderman Villalobos, to approve outdoor special event, Northern Lake County Crop Hunger Walk at Saint Anastasia Church and Streets in northeast Waukegan from twelve PM to four-thirty PM on October twenty-first. The sponsor has applied under the directive for non-city government use of city-owned buildings and venues. Any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman, Newsome, second by Alderman Tempest, to approve Waukegan firefighter request to hold a fundraiser, fundraiser, uh, fill the boot for Muscular Dysphagia Association on September twentieth, twenty eighteen, at the intersection of Grand and Green Bay, Green Bay Road from nine-thirty AM to three, three o'clock PM. Any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Uh, motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman May, to approve Little Ford Lines Club request to hold its candy days on October twelfth and thirteenth in accordance with the lines of Illinois statewide fundraising. Any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
Aye.
Uh, motion by Alderman, uh, May, second by Alderman Valco, to approve all attached block party applications. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by, uh, Alderman Taylor, to approve a supplemental appropriation relative to the annual appropriation adopted for May one, twenty seventeen, to April thirtieth, twenty eighteen fiscal, fiscal year. Are there any questions to the motion? All, uh, roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item B, motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Bolton, to approve an appropriation transfer relative to the annual appropriations adopted for May one, twenty seventeen, to April thirty, twenty eighteen fiscal year. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
All right, closing items, item ten, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Seager.
You know, th- this whole last weekend, weekend, was very busy, and it was, it was a joy for me. I really had a lot of fun with the families, the kids, and all, all the residents that showed up, the Alderman, the Mayor. Uh, but, you know what, that's a long walk from Buttrick to County Street, up Washington Street. But I want to thank everybody for all the hard work, participation, and it was, it was a wonderful time. I enjoyed it. Thank you.
Alderman Mozio.
The bears are on.
Alderman Villalobos.
A couple of things, just to try, I'll keep it quick. Um, number one, just to read what the mayor mentioned about the migrant quilt project hosted at the Urban Edge, I, I encourage people to go check that out. There was three speakers there, one of them was a woman who created two of the quilts, one of them was the one who founded the, the, the project itself, the third one is, uh, the director of the organization, I believe. And they had, um, some very, um, inspiring, well, the term I, I coined, or in my brain was tragically inspiring. Um, there's so much tragedy associated with that, these quilts represent the deaths of individuals who are trying to cross the desert. They're migrants, and it's unfortunate, uh, that people lose their lives trying to, uh, find, um, a place to call home, basically coming to our country. So, they had recorded approximately for the past eighteen years about three thousand, two hundred deaths, approximately, that they, they found or know of. Um, so, it's just, it's very interesting, um, again, I just recommend people check that out. Also, the, um, the weekend events that transpired, um, the bit of controversy that was brought up today aside, um, it was just very nice. Again, I'm, I'm a community-based person, so it's always great to see so many people attend our community events. The parade lineup was just as packed as it was almost every year, um, for the parade, and then the two events, the one at the Stein Pavilion, the one at the Harbor's Edge, um, both were well-attended. I was, I popped by both of them just to see what they're, how they were doing, how they were operating, what their attendance looked like, and... The harbor on Sunday was just, it was kind of a madhouse, but it was a good madhouse in the sense that so many people were coming down to participate in the events that were being offered, so, um, I thought that was, that was nice to see and witness. Uh, third thing, just a little, uh, safety for people, uh, that, um, motorists that go down Washington Street, there was a scene call that happened this morning on Washington Street, our public works is on top of it, but they will be working on that space, uh, right by, just by Lideck ledge, so between Glen Rock and Washington, where those two roads intersect, and right before West Street, um, there's a little scene call there. So, again, motorists that go down Washington Street, just be careful and conscientious as you drive, because, um, in the mornings and evenings, when you drive, those, the suns are in your eye, the sun is in your eye, um, and so, just be careful again with that, who has public work, uh, staff are going to be there working on that road, and that's all, thank you.
Alderman Newsome.
Thank you. A couple of things, um, starting middle of last week, started getting some calls regarding mosquitoes. And I'm sure everyone has noticed that, uh, seems like we've had a rash of mosquitoes during the daytime, um, can't even get out to cut your grass. So, um, I was in contact with the regional manager from Clark, who does our mosquito spraying, and discussed it with him, and he sent me an email to explain what has happened. The city mosquito management program, as discussed, uh, we did a, two citywide adult mosquito control applications, and they were performed on the evenings of July thirteenth and September the fourth. The first was in response to high mosquito nuisance levels caused by the wettest May and June on record, and the second in response to two West Nile virus human cases in the city, and mosquito surveillance showing a continued elevated risk of human transmission. The city's program also includes nine inspections of potential breeding water areas, uh, six of known breeding areas, two applications to control breeding, the city's extensive storm drain, catchwater basins, and lead structures, they were done. In addition, the city has a trap to collect mosquitoes and test them for West Nile virus within the city. The heavy rains of late August and Labor Day wet us on record, and higher-than-normal September temperatures have led to a substantial increase of floodwater mosquitoes in the region. Then it goes on to say, should the city decide, uh, to do another spray, it will cost in excess of twelve thousand dollars. So, I guess, I don't think that's in the budget. We included two sprays for the year. Hopefully, the temperature goes down at night, which it hasn't been doing, if it goes down into the forties, maybe we can kill off some of those mosquitoes. But, um, I don't, we'll probably do for some rain in the next couple of days. Hopefully, the temperature drops, but who knows, everybody wants summer to, to last too, so, but, um, in the meantime, I guess we can keep an eye on it, and should we need to do another spray, be up to the council and the city whether we do that or not. And also, I've had, uh, calls regarding alternate parking. I've talked to the chief extensively about this, and, um, I pulled the parking law to read. Some people have lived in the city for nu- um, number amount of years, and they still are not aware that there's alternate parking in effect. That's what I hear. The alten- alternate parking ordinance states that vehicles must park on the odd side of the street on odd calendar days, and the even number side of the street on even calendar days. The ordinance is strictly enforced by the Waukegan Police Department daily from twelve AM to seven-thirty AM. Uh, the alternate parking ordinance has been in effect for more than thirty years to increase safety on city streets during winter weather, and to better identify abandoned vehicles year-round. Closely monitoring on-street parking during snowstorms allows public works crews to quickly and more efficiently move snow. Uh, the penalty for not complying, uh, with alternate parking is twenty-five dollars. I know a lot of residents say, well, I don't have a, um, driveway to park in. You can park on the street now, but you just need to move your car to the right side of the street, or should I say, the correct side of the street, going on whatever even or odd day. And, uh, it does identify abandoned vehicles. I had one over on Buttrick, and, um, the city was trying to remove some brush, but could not remove it because the vehicle would never move. So, um, I went to the resident and asked him whose car it was, um, they told me whose it was, and they would move it, well, three days later, the car's still there. So, uh, it eventually was moved, and we were able to take care of brush. So, um, it's very important, I think, that we, um, comply with the alternate parking ordinance that we have on the books, and not only in the wintertime. I think it should be enforced strictly, uh, in the, uh, warm, warm weather as well as the winter weather, so that the, um, residents know that, hey, we got to do this, and not just slip under the radar. I think we should, uh, be enforcing it regularly, and, uh, that is all I have, thank you.
Alderman Tempest.
I would agree with the Alderman in regards to odd-even parking. I think it's good, and it helps us control what's going to be there. If a car's parked there, gets two traffic tickets on for wrong side, you know something's wrong. The street isn't a permanent parking place, it's a place to park sometimes, but you've got to move your cars. So, I think it's a good ordinance to keep track of what's happening, and keep track of abandoned cars also.
Yes.
I'm in, I'm in strict favor of the ordinance, I think it's good for the city.
Alderman May?
Yes.
Alderman Valco.
Thank you, ma'am, just one item tonight, quickly. Something that I'm sure, just not myself, I'm sure all you Aldermen have heard, uh, moaning and groaning on this, is the water bills. Since we went to monthly water bills, um, and the people from the, uh, every three months, I have probably gotten, since it went into effect, less than a dozen calls, ten to twelve calls, but I'm sure you have received some also. Where the bill comes out, four or five days later, we get it at the house. Four to five days later after that, for a total of ten days, the bill is due. For us, up here on this, this up here, we're down at City Hall two or three days a week, so we can pay our water bill. Some of the people can't come down here to pay the water bill. Some of the people that I've discussed this with are older people, like me and like you, and we don't know how to pay...
You're almost as old as you think you are.
We, we don't pay our bills online. They don't want to pay their bills online because people steal their numbers on the, from the credit cards, and this is how credit card fraud starts. I just want the Alderman to think, maybe we can do something about this, extend the ten-day period to fifteen days, or to ten, to twelve days or something, because when I get a bill, myself and everybody else, and I'm, I'm looking at them, and in five days, it's due. It just, it doesn't sit right with the citizens of this city. So, just think about it, maybe we can come up with something, and, uh, we can help the citizens out of the city.
I've already thought about it, I'm with you.
That's all I have, ma'am.
Alderman Taylor.
I also have had some of the same complaints, and even for people who pay out of like a Chase credit card, it can't clear in that amount of time, so it, it has been a, a little bit of a problem that we need to address that.
Well, uh, and not to cut you off, uh, I will put that as a high priority on everybody's, let's, let's talk about it, come back with some options for you, but next council meeting.
That would be great, thank you, ma'am.
Okay? Thank you.
Um, I want to talk a little bit about parking also, that, um, I have had chronic issues in my ward with parking, whether it be people parking on cul-de-sacs the wrong way, under no parking signs. Some places in particular that have been problems for me are Haley Court in the Hidden Glen subdivision, Lucia, Pleasant Hill. Please understand that particularly as we start to go into the winter months, our plows need to get through, and we need you to clear those cars off. It is, it should not even have to be talked about, that I've drive by empty driveways with no cars in them, and two or three cars on the street blocking mailboxes, like I said, under no parking signs. I even have motorcycles parking on sidewalks when sidewalk, when driveways are free. That's crazy, and I think it's time that we really start hitting people with the tickets and letting them know that this is not appropriate for our city. Not only does it make our city look bad, but it's just, it, it's so unreasonable, it's not even funny. Second, I want to talk about, I've had a lot of complaints, both in my ward and out of my ward, with landlord-tenant relationships. While most of them are civil matters and do not concern the city, I will say this, that all landlords are responsible to make sure that their residents have hot water, proper heat, mold-free, and that as a community, that we allow landlords to raise rents, but not to the point that suddenly you're putting people out on the street. These are our citizens, we need to look out for them as well, so I just want to make sure that we as a council are aware that some of this is going on in our, in our city, and that, like I said, while most of them are civil matters, there still comes a point that landlords, if you're going to come into this city, respect our residents. Thank you.
Alderman Tay- uh, Bolton.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Alderman Mozio, second by Alderman Tempest, to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried, who's winning?